Good evening, one. Good evening, all, and welcome to our former formal session tonight. And if we could all stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we could consider the affairs of our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. And pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. Okay, can we also give a moment of silence for all of those who paid the ultimate price to protect our great city and nation? Thank you all. Madam Clerk, a roll call?
We have every, I'm sorry, we have the roll call. Everyone's present.
Oh, thank you. Could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
Second.
All right.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to zero, you've certified the closed session, being in accordance with a motion to recess.
Could I have a motion to certify the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of April 2, 2024, the formal session of April 9, 2024, and the special formal session of April 9, 2024?
Second.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 10 to zero, with Councilmember Remick abstaining, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
You know, it's always a pleasure for the the council to honor those who deserve honor that makes our city so great. In our first resolution, autism awareness one, I've asked my friend and colleague, Michael Berlucci, if he would kindly do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor, and it is my pleasure to once again read this really important recognition of so many organizations and individuals who serve people with the on the with autism and their families. And I'd like to invite them all to come to the podium now. And welcome to your City Hall. And I'll begin by saying, whereas autism spectrum disorder affects an estimated 1 in 36 U.S. children and 1 in 45 U.S. adults, and is a complex condition that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges, and whereas autism results in differences with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background, and whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life, and whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help promote connections to supports, services, community, and resources that individuals on the autism spectrum need to live fully across their lifespan, and whereas early identification and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood, and fostering greater independence, and whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information and support, and whereas individuals on the autism spectrum should have opportunities to reach their full potential, and the whole of society stands to benefit from this, and whereas nine of the organizations located in Virginia Beach providing services to individuals on the autism spectrum, as well as family members affected by autism, are: FACT, Families of Autism Coming Together, the Autism Society of Virginia, Aid &amp; Other, Commonwealth Autism, Destination Family Services, Easter Seals, UCP, and Port Health, Leiter Counseling and Consulting, Centerra Therapy Centers, and the Social Butterflies Club. Now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to recognize these organizations for their efforts to address the diverse needs of individuals on the autism spectrum and their families, and to recognize April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month in order to create a kinder, more inclusive world for people with autism spectrum disorder. So thank you very much. And Mayor, if you could join me to present the, and then after we present these two, you'll be invited to say a few words.
Good evening. My name's Tyler Williamson. I'm the CEO of FACT, Families of Autism Coming Together, and thank you guys again for having us this year, and once again recognizing Autism Acceptance Month. I tried to scale back the proclamation so Mr. Berlucci didn't lose his entire voice from last year's version, but we really appreciate y'all having us back here and continuing to support individuals with autism in Virginia Beach as well as all throughout Hampton Roads. So as one of the representatives of FACT, and these are other representatives from all the amazing organizations in our Autism Resource Center, which I'm happy to announce, we opened in June of 2023. Many of you were there, and we really appreciate y'all coming up to the grand opening. But it's been amazing to have our own facility. We've all been able to get in, are operating, and actually being able to expand programs now and offer more services to the amazing individuals with autism in our community. And so we thank you guys for your support, and we thank you guys for once again acknowledging and recognizing Autism Acceptance Month in the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you. At this time, may I invite Susan Nguyen and her family to come forward? And it is indeed an honor to recognize a true game changer and hero in Virginia Beach, John Oliver W. Nguyen, on this day. And I've asked my friend and colleague, Worth Remick, if he would be so kind to do the honor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Nguyen family. Welcome. It is indeed a distinct honor and pleasure of mine to read this proclamation. W. Nguyen was a real hero, as the mayor said, talented in so many areas, as you'll see when you hear these all these whereas's. And whoever wrote this proclamation did a great job because I really think it captured W. W. I did not know him so well. I did play tennis against him one time, but he's a role model for so many of us on this dais and across the city and across the states, as you'll learn in a minute. Proclamation. Whereas John Oliver W. Nguyen was born on July 6, 1945, in Norfolk, Virginia, and died on October 26, 2024, in Virginia Beach, where he resided for more than 50 years. And whereas W. is survived by the love of his life, his wife Susan Stripling Snodgrass Nguyen, with whom he celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary on December 23, 2022. W. is also survived by their two sons, John Oliver Nguyen Jr., his wife Catherine Waddell, Waddell, excuse me, Nguyen, and their two children, and Bradford Enon Nguyen, his wife Catherine Crawford Nguyen, and their four daughters, all residents of the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas Susan and W. s son Lee Stripling Nguyen predeceased W. on November 20, 1984, at the age of six from leukemia. For Susan and W., the loss of Lee was the most painful experience of their lives, and they were determined as a couple to be devoted to the Lord in the hope of being reunited with Lee. And whereas W. was a graduate of Norfolk Academy, Princeton University, and the University of Virginia Law School, W.'s experiences at these institutions were hugely important to him, and he spent the rest of his life giving back to them in numerous ways, including serving as the president of the Board of Trustees at Norfolk Academy, as a lifelong trustee at Princeton University, and as a rector of the universe of the Board of Visitors at the University of Virginia. And whereas, after graduating from law school in 1971, W. worked as a corporate attorney at Wilcox and Savage in Norfolk, and then in 1974 went to work for Frank Baden Sr. at Landmark Communications Incorporated, a company which had interests in newspapers, broadcasting, cable programming, and digital publishing. W. rose through the ranks at Landmark, retiring as president and chief executive officer in 2001, and continuing to serve on the Board of Directors for many years thereafter. And whereas in 1982, Landmark introduced the Weather Channel, the 24-hour cable network, which W. was primarily responsible for launching and growing. In 1997, he received a Vanguard Award for Programmers from the National Cable Television Association, and the Governor's Award from the National Academy of Cable Programming for his leadership and insight into making the Weather Channel the preeminent provider of weather information, and for one of the most innovative and popular networks on television. In 2016, W. was elected to the Cable Television Hall of Fame. And whereas W. was above all a visionary civic leader committed to creating economic opportunity and success for the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Hampton Roads region, and the city of Virginia Beach. He was a tireless and energetic advocate and trailblazer for initiatives and organizations that resulted in positive economic growth for the benefit of countless Virginians. And whereas W. was the former chairman of the Hampton Roads Community Foundation and former co-chairman of the Hampton Roads Partnership. W. founded and served as chief, as chair for Reinvent Hampton Roads, subsequently reorganized as the Hampton Roads Executive Roundtable, the region's economic development organization focused on thought, leadership, strategic direction, innovation, and collaboration. W. also founded and served as co-chair of the Hampton Roads Maritime Collaborative for Growth and Innovation to advance the long-term economic development and innovation for the region's significant maritime ecosystem. And whereas W. was a driving force behind the creation of the innovative Go Virginia program, a unite unique bipartisan business-led initiative to strengthen the economies of all regions of the Commonwealth, including Hampton Roads. He was the initial chair of Go Virginia and served on the board until his death. And whereas in 2006, W. received a First Citizen Award from the National Governors Association for Distinguished Service to State Government for his work in creating and then implementing the Council on Virginia's Future, which focuses on developing a long-range strategy and performance management system for the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas W. was a champion for higher education, serving as a member of the Virginia Business Higher Education Council, the state-appointed Council of Higher Education of Virginia, the Governor's Commission on Higher Education and Innovation and Investment, and the Virginia Higher Education Advisory Council. And whereas in 2014, W. received a Darden Award for Regional Leadership from the Civic Leadership Institute, and was awarded an honorary degree Doctor of Humane Letters from Old Dominion University. In 2020, W. was honored as a living legend by the Virginia Business Magazine. And a couple more whereas's. Whereas, in the words of Governor Glenn A. Youngkin, quote, "W. left a forever mark on the Commonwealth of Virginia, dedicating his immense experience and his life to improving economic opportunity and prosperity across Virginia," unquote. And whereas W. continually inspired, encouraged, mentored, advised, and advocated for a multitude of government, education, and business leaders, as well as students with diverse socioeconomic backgrounds. He encouraged people to be innovative and supported entrepreneurship for the economic benefit of all Virginians. W.'s impact on the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Hampton Roads region, and the city of Virginia Beach will be left, will be felt, leveraged, and built upon for generations to come. Whereas W. will be remembered for his love of and his devotion to his family, his deep and abiding faith in the Lord, his strong values, his passionate concern for the well-being of others, his unwavering commitment to the state of Virginia and Hampton Roads, and his tireless drive to change and improve the quality of life for others. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor, Virginia Beach, City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim April 16, 2024, John Oliver W. Nguyen Day. Congratulations.
I just want to thank you all so very much for honoring my husband and my family. And you can tell he was a busy man. I always called him my man with a mission. Good idea. Thanks. You could tell he dearly loved Virginia Beach. W. W., by the way, is W. for our last name is Nguyen, W. for Nguyen. W. dearly loved our city, and he dearly loved our state. And I think continuous improvement was in his DNA. He was never satisfied with the status. He just, he always thought we could excel in whatever. He always felt like he could try to make a difference, and with the help of many others, they were pretty effective. And I want to thank not only every single one of you who obviously loves this city and this state as much as he did, but I want to thank all our friends over here, and his many colleagues whom he respected, admired, enjoyed working with so many of these people over here, gives so much time to this city and the state, and they ought to be recognized as well, because clearly you can't do this alone. And these are pretty remarkable people in these seats. But anyway, I just want to thank you all for honoring us. It was a lovely proclamation, and I wish you well with all your work.
Thank you all, and God bless you. And thank you to W. You know, we often say Virginia Beach is a city of heroes, and, you know, W. Nguyen was definitely one of them. But we are also going to honor today the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service Day. And Chief Pravas, if you'd be so kind to come up?
If I could, Mayor, I'd like for the whole second row here to come up.
Yeah, come on up.
And then Ryan and Mark, y'all come on up as well, buddy. Bring the baby. Pick him up off the floor.
We got a potential recruit there.
Yeah, he'd be a third generation. Ready, sir? Okay. All right. Whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have designated the day of May 4, 2024, the annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency service personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff. And whereas an average of 80 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas firefighters and emergency service personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our local community. And whereas the National Fallen Firefighters' Memorial Weekend marks the weekend following International Firefighters' Day 2024. And whereas it is a major, it is of major importance that we increase our efforts to reduce death, injuries, and property loss from fire. And whereas, as dusk turns to dark, landmarks, homes, fire service organizations, and businesses across the country will glow in respect from May 1 through the 5, 2024, to the fallen and their families. And whereas in 2017, the foundation created Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters to recognize the 25th anniversary of the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation and the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. And whereas Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters is expanded to include fire departments, businesses, and families illuminating their homes and businesses in red. And whereas in remembrance of Virginia Beach. Thanks, I needed that. In remembrance of Virginia Beach Fire Captain. I just want to take a second here. I told Sarah and Matt this, his final days when I spoke, yeah, thanks, Frankie, when I spoke as the fire chief of what it took to be a Virginia Beach firefighter, and I hold them as the highest standard in the land, I told Matt and Sarah, and Ryan's dad was there, that who I thought of when I spoke about the quintessential firefighter was Matt Chevrrati. He embodied embodied everything that a firefighter should be and more. We lost him to, I can't say the name, but thyroid cancer. It's about a mile long. But he's greatly missed, and they're going to honor him this weekend. So thanks for the indulgence. Thank you. So I'll finish now. Whereas in remembrance of Virginia Beach Fire Captain Matthew Chevy Chevrrati, who lost his life April 17, 2023, and all fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice, and to pay respects to the survivors of our fallen heroes, participate in Light the Night Red across America for fallen firefighters, May 1 through the 5, by changing your porch lights to red, pausing for a moment of silence, or reading special passage to honor the sacrifices of these public servants and their families. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim, May 4, 2024, as National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service Day. And for Virginia Beach, I call upon all citizens and Virginia Beach, of Virginia Beach, and upon all patriotic civic educational organizations to observe the day of May 4, 2024, in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency service personnel by lowering American flags on all buildings to half-staff. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed the 16th day of April 2024. Sincerely, Bobby M. Dyer. All right.
Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of the council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Stiles, thank you for recognizing the dangerous job that firefighters do. Tonight, I was joined by Sarah Chevrrati, members of my command staff, members of the organization, retirees and active, and the union president, Max Canano. And we really do appreciate you recognizing what we do and the dangers associated with it. Unfortunately, 226 firefighters gave their lives in the line of duty last year, as two of them this week. Unfortunately, a fire recruit stopped to help somebody on the road in Los Angeles is what killed just this week. And then a firefighter in Milwaukee was trying to save a life, trying to make an attic, and the room flashed on him, and he's been seriously burned. So it is a very dangerous profession, and we really do appreciate what you do to recognize the risks that we take to protect this community. It is very important to us, and we really are appreciative of the efforts to recognize the May 1, the 1st through the 4th service. May 5, we'll be having, Matt will be going on the wall in Emmitsburg up in the National Fallen Fires Memorial, so we'll be up there. It's also the day of the Crush Cancer event. So it's interesting. It's bittersweet that those two events happen at the same time. You know, we're celebrating the life and all the gifts that Matt gave us and this community, and so many things that he brought to our fire department that are just memorable. They're just. address any single item. If the speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have called up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this are all of us to strive for civility and respect. At this point, Rosemary, would you be so kind?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Number one is the ordinance to amend the city code, Section 21-230, Ray Traffic Calming. Number two is the resolution to approve the 2024 plan of financing with the Virginia Beach Development Authority not to exceed $168.5 million, and approve certain documents prepared for in connection with and financing and authorize the exception, excuse me, in execution and delivery of same. Number three is a resolution to provide for the issuance of sale of general obligation public improvement funds, bonds, in the maximum amount of $276 million, and provide for the form, details, and payment thereof, Ray authorized public improvements. Number four is a resolution to grant a permit to Hospital to Home LLC, Ray Ambulance Services. Number five is the ordinance to adopt the 2024 Housing Choice Voucher Annual Agency Plan and Revised Administrative Plan and authorize the city manager to execute and submit the plans for the, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number six is the resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with the United States of America under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Number seven is the ordinance to authorize acquisition of 1,301 plus or minus acres of property at 2425 George Mason Drive with, from Enterprise Investors LLC, Ray Building 24. Number eight is the ordinance to extend the date for satisfied condition, Ray closing a 15-foot portion of an unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to 650 South Atlantic Avenue, and one of 22 and Block 20 of Croatan Beach. Number nine is a resolution to approve an extension of the Town Center Option Agreement, and recommend that the city, that Virginia Beach Development Authority approve the extension. Number 10 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Sandbridge Shores Bass Inlet, and into a five-foot city-owned drainage and utility easement at the rear of 2945 Sandbin Road, Ray maintaining an existing frame shed, timber pier, timber bulkhead, concrete boat ramp, and construct and maintain an aluminum boat lift with timber piles, and that's in District 2. Number 11 is ordinance to accept and appropriate $7,940 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to FY 2023-24 Human Services Operation Budget Ray Preventing, Prevention Services Program. Number 12 is the ordinance to transfer up to 800,000 from the vacancy savings in the General Fund to Emergency Medical Services and authorize two full-time employees, Ray the establishment and administration of the municipal pharmaceutical program for EVMs, fire and rescue squad staff and members. Number 13 is the City of Virginia Beach for a certificate of appropriateness, Ray, the appeal of Historic Review Board decision on applications to modify Number 21 to 20 to temporarily alter window openings and remove natural slate roof and replace with synthetic at 2403 Courthouse Drive in District 2.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Number two is Carl R. Ellis Jr. for a variance to Section 4 of the subdivision, regulation subdivision lot to create two single-family dwelling lots of 2620 Broad Bay Road, District 8, and that's to defer until May 21st. Number three is the Virginia Beach AVA Ray LLC for a street closure, Ray the appropriate approximately 830 square foot portion of an unnamed, unimproved right-of-way adjacent to 2375 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and that is in District 3. Number four is Born Primitive LLC, Modern Savage Investments LLC for modification of proffered to conditional change of zoning, Ray, modify the conceptual landscape plan and increase the height of the building at 1489, 1477, and 1469 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and two parcels directly east of 1469 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and that's in District 6. Number five is the Virginia Electric and Power Company, DBA Dominion Energy Virginia USA Entertainment LLC for a conditional change of zoning from conditional B2 Community Business District to conditional I1 Industrial District, Ray construct and office warehouse building and conditional use permitted regarding the bulk storage yard at 1585 Dam Neck Road, District 5, with Wilson abstaining. Number six is Terry Moore Miffton, Charles E., excuse me, Charles and Terry Miffton for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 403, and that's in District 5. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Move for approval.
Can I need discussion? Barbara?
I do just have a question for clarification. Does this mean then that we are upholding what the Historical Review Board said, which was approve the windows but deny the slate, the artificial slate? I don't think we've got information about that out. As far as, I just was, was understanding that it was going to cause a delay in getting the project finished. Is that correct?
Counselmember Henley, it was, it was going to increase the cost and cause a delay if the denial, if the, if council did not overturn the Housing Review Board's decision.
Well, perhaps we just need to withdraw that until we get the information because I don't think we were given that information in our package.
Well, if it'd be okay, Ms. Henley, I'll just read a, there wasn't going to be a speaker. I did have a narrative, and I'd be glad to read it for you. The next item is 13, an appeal by the city of the Historical Review Board denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the use of synthetic slate to replace the natural slate roof on Building 3, previously Building 1, located at 2403 Courthouse Drive. The city's municipal complex, including Building Number 3, is located in historical and cultural district, and as such, a certificate appropriateness is required to perform repairs, alterations, or demolition, demolition of buildings in the district. The roof of Building 3 was found to be need replacement during the renovation of the building. The city applied for the Historical Review Board to replace the roof with synthetic slate rather than natural slate. On December 20, 2023, the Historical Review Board denied the city's request for a certificate of appropriateness to replace the roof on Building Number 3 with synthetic slate and require that natural slate be used. The city code provides that an appeal of a decision by the Historical Review Board is to be decided by council. LJ Hanson can explain the position of the city.
I think we really need to hear the position of the city as far as what the cost and what the delay is going to be.
Ms. Mayor, I don't think LJ's here. I think the initial intent was if there was no speaker, staff wouldn't speak. But basically, it would have increased the cost significantly and it would have delayed the project. So that's why staff submitted an appeal.
Okay. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I remember, actually, it is in our agenda packet here that, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was anywhere between $2 million and $5 million that was estimated to, to use a natural slate as opposed to the synthetic.
Correct. And it would have delayed the project significantly as well.
The minutes of the Historical Review Board are included in our council binder.
Yeah, I read there, but it didn't have the, the numbers in there. I mean, it just had the fact that they were not accepting that. And I kept looking for the numbers and I didn't find them.
So the numbers, Mrs. Schulman, we just read down there, about $2 to $5 million increase if we were to go with the natural product in lieu of the synthetic.
It was how many million?
$2 to $5 million.
And I think the Historical Review Board was not able to consider the, the cost. Is that correct?
Correct. Based on the HRB policy, they're, they're not allowed.
What I was also reading was that they were not able to identify the color, that they were going to go with a lesser color, but in order to have the real slate. So I don't know. I just think we, I just thought we were going to discuss this more, so.
Yeah, but you know, you know, at this point, I think, you know, if, if it's okay with the council that we go ahead and, you know, just, you know.
Counselmember Henley, with this action, council's overturning the action of the HRB. So basically, what this would allow.
So I think the motion needs to clearly state.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Yes, Madam Clerk, excuse me. I, I think the motion needs to clearly state that, that the, it is for, it is to grant the appeal, if that is the intent, so that the record is clear.
Now, tell me that again. It's to uphold, uphold their action or to?
Well, my understanding from the discussion was it was consent to grant the appeal, which would have been to overrule the Historic Review Board. But if that is not the intent of council, then someone from the dais needs to, to speak to that.
All right. So we would be also overruling their allowing the windows and just the part about the slate. I'm just not clear on what we're doing.
The only, the only portion that was appealed related to the slate roof, the portion relating to the windows was not appealed, is my understanding.
And if we, if we pass this, we are overruling their denial?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, I just wasn't, but I would still like to see the, the facts, the, the amount of cost and also the delay. I think the delay is as big as the cost. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we okay? Anybody else? Okay, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, noting Vice Mayor Wilson's abstention, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
All right, we will move now to a couple of planning items. Okay, item number one, Wickliffe Presbyterian Church and BHCLLC trustees of Wickliffe Presbyterian Church, 1445 Great Neck Road and 2307 Millwood Road. And that's for modifications of conditions to a conditional use permit, conditional change of zoning from R10 to conditional O1 office, conditional zoning from R10 residential to conditional R10, and a variance to Section 4.4b of the subdivision regulations for parcel A, and a variance to Section 4.4b of the subdivision regulations for parcel Lot 5. Now, are there speakers?
First speaker is Eddie Burdon, representing the applicant.
Welcome, Eddie.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Honorable Members of City Council. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney. It's my privilege to come before this council tonight, representing BHCLLC, the Bechard Companies, who have a contract to purchase the 3.9 acre northern parcel of property with frontage on Millwood Road and Great Neck Road from Wickliffe Presbyterian Church, which I am also here tonight representing. The first thing I need to do is officially request this council to permit my clients to withdraw two of the joint applications on your agenda. They are the request for a subdivision variance for the proposed Lot A, a 2.538 acre western portion of the church's excess 3.9 acre parcel. This variance request was originally filed due to the existence of a 30-foot Dominion Virginia Power easement, which Dominion has agreed to amend to less than 30 feet in width and is thus no longer necessary. It is also unnecessary because a requested conditional rezoning from R10 residential district to a proffered conditional O1 district on the 2.538 portion of the, of the church's excess property is the second application of BHCLC and Wickliffe Presbyterian. As the property owner, we ask city council to approve for withdrawal. Third, the third thing I'd request involves the separate singular application of Wickliffe Presbyterian Church to amend their original use permit from 1966 for religious use on the, back then, northern portion of the property. Wickliffe desires to withdraw that application to amend that use permit as it pertains to the 2.35 acre, 358 acre parcel A, so that that will remain in place on the application that we are asking the council to withdraw to conditionally rezone that western portion of their property to conditional O1 office district. So the only applications we are asking city council to act favorably upon this evening are the applications pertaining to the eastern 1.452 acre portion of the 3.9 acre parcel B2A1. The application to conditionally rezone the property from existing unconditional R10 zoning district to a conditional R10 zoning district, which will simply restrict the, that area of the property to the proffered plan to develop five single-family homes and, under the R10 zoning district, backing up to Great Neck Road on the east side and backing up to the church as far as Lot 5 on the south side is concerned. The subdivision variance for Lot 5, whose frontage will, as, as the rest of the lots be on Great Neck Road, is simply to provide a reverse flag, if you will, for the purpose of running public utilities from Great Neck Road to the home proposed on Lot 5. All five lots will be accessed internally and not from Great Neck Road, as is depicted on the proffered plan. I'm confident you are all aware that the proffers include the extension of the sidewalk that's presently in the Great Neck Road right-of-way along all the property's frontage on Millwood, the dedication to the city of a five-foot utility easement along the western side of Great Neck Road, and along Millwood Road, the planting of a 10-foot evergreen landscape buffer along both roads, and the construction of a six-foot privacy fence west of the landscape buffer, 15 feet back from the edge of the public right-of-way. The proffers include the architectural pictorial renderings of the high-quality homes that would be built on these five lots. The homes will be subject to a mandatory membership homeowners association, which will be responsible for maintaining the area of the property to the proffered plan to develop five single-family homes under the R10 zoning district, backing up to Great Neck Road on the east side and backing up to the church as far as lot five on the south side is concerned. The subdivision variance for lot five, whose frontage will, as the rest of the lots be on Great Neck Road, is simply to provide a reverse flag, if you will, for the purpose of running public utilities from Great Neck Road to the home proposed on lot five. All five lots will be accessed internally and not from Great Neck Road, as is depicted on the proffered plan. I'm confident you are all aware that the proffers include the extension of the sidewalk that's presently in the Great Neck Road right-of-way along all the property's frontage on Millwood, the dedicating to the city of a five-foot utility easement along the western side of Great Neck Road and along Millwood Road, the planting of a 10-foot evergreen landscape buffer along both roads, and the construction of a six-foot privacy fence west of the landscape buffer, 15 feet back from the edge of the public right-of-way. The proffers include the architectural pictorial renderings of the high-quality homes that would be built on these five lots. The homes will be subject to a mandatory Membership Homeowners Association, which will be responsible for maintaining the landscape buffer, the fencing, and the private access road to the five homes located on the property. Access from Millwood Road to the short section of improved, private, maintained roadway serving these five houses will, excuse me, will be something that the application that will follow this application will, we absolutely believe will be a church that has approached the clients, the BHC folks, about pursuing a purchase of the property, and they're in fact drawing up a contract to do just that. And the Bechards need to close on the property for that to take place, and they need to move forward with this application to be in a position to do that. The church's application would include the road similar to what's shown on the O1 zoning application that we have withdrawn, and that would be shared maintenance with an ingress/egress easement. That road, along with the road on the property we're asking to be rezoned, will meet the fire department's standards for weight bearing of public streets. The property we are asking you to conditionally rezone will not be subdivided nor developed. No request will be made to do that until the use of the western 2.538 acres is determined whether that is another church, which we believe, what we are confident, that's going to be coming forward. Once the Bechards are in a position to enter the contract with them, they will be filing an application, and that contract will be for them to buy the property. So there's no ambiguity about that. And if that does not pass muster with council, then there would be a request to conditionally rezone it from the unconditional R10 to a conditional R10 with a specific proffered plan, so everyone would know exactly what was going to happen, and that the pond on the property would not be altered or filled or anything of the sort. Something that Wickliffe Church has never proposed to do, and it's something that the Bechards have made very, very clear they have no intention to do, and the use permit stays in place, the easement through the pond that the city has stays in place, there's not going to be any effort made by anybody, and there's no reason to, because there's no use at this point on the back piece of the property that would even begin to provide an incentive for anybody to want to try to fill the pond, which the parties I represent have no intention of ever pursuing that. And by embracing the recently expressed desire of another church to acquire this western portion of the property, my clients have been bending over backwards to try to, you know, find a use that people would be happier with than putting houses on their same-sized lots as their houses, and this, we believe, provides that, provides that opportunity. Lastly, if council approves the conditional R10 rezoning request on the eastern 1.452 acres, the, I believe that actually removes the applicability of the Wickliffe use permit on that small section of the property, but I will honor your city attorney, Mr. Stiles' request and desire that should a motion be made to approve these two applications, the subdivision variance for lot five and the proffered rezoning of that front portion of the property, that that motion also contain a motion to vacate or amend and remove the Wickliffe Church use permit as it pertains to just that 1.532 acre portion of the subject property from 1966. We're not requesting any changes whatsoever with regard to the plan that the professional staff has recommended approval for and that your planning commission, at its public hearing, heard almost entirely opposition to the O1 conditional rezoning. We are simply asking for this approval on a property that has been under contract for two and a half years and which the church needs to sell and the Bechards are willing to purchase and take their chances on what happens with the back part of the property and come back before you, along with, we're pretty certain, a church in the very near future, in order to get the deal closed, which needs to happen contractually. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
The first speaker, sorry, the second speaker is Kim Mayo, and she is representing Lakeview Shores. After Ms. Mayo will be Wendy Crutchfield.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here as vice president of the Lakeview Shores Bradford Park Civic League, representing over 320 homes in District Nine. We are joining many civic leagues across the city to protect our property rights and support Team Redbridge, and we ask for a deferral this evening, given all the new information that's come upon us.
The next speaker is Wendy Crutchfield, and she is representing Great Neck Estates Civic, I'm sorry, no, that's not true, you're representing the Lake Association. And then Derek Copeland.
Hey.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Wendy Crutchfield. Is that too loud? I vote in District Nine, and I'm speaking today as a representative of the Great Neck Lakes Association and as a homeowner on Lake Conrad III, which is downstream from Lake Conrad II, part of the city's stormwater management system and owned by White Cliff Presbyterian Church. And I'm a proud part of Team Redbridge, who have been diligently sounding the alarm about destructive development plans on this valuable property and natural habitat. Since I have the extra time to speak today, I want to thank the body for the time thus far invested and ask you to just go a little bit farther with us. Smart decisions with the best outcomes take the investment of everyone's time and energy. In this case, educating the public on this application has involved a great deal of time and energy by a community also, and we have over 9,000 active followers at this point, which is 3,000 more than when we last met. Even Mayor Dyer gave recognition for the no-billed VB Wetlands signage throughout the city. That tells you that there is something very important here to protect and to fully understand. I imagine there are numerous emails on the subject that you simply have not had the time to read, which will be a matter of public record with the recording of this agenda. These letters are also being posted on our website with the author's permission. Most of us are confused about what is being proposed at this juncture, and may ask you, can you explain it to your neighbor? I would encourage you to defer until you have a chance to read all the letters and fully understand why this is such a concern. It is your duty. The imposition, I'm sorry, the opposition is centered around the protection of what we hold dear. It's not fear of change or NIMBYism, as we, and we have never inferred, interfered in the church's right to sell their property. They could have done that two years ago, but the developer wanted to make sure he could maximize his profit before committing to the purchase. What we stand for is the protection of a natural habitat, protection of the integrity of a neighborhood, and protection of a religious use. Since I'm filling in for Coach Ryan Sully tonight, who is kicking off baseball season for the Independence Eagles, I must follow his lead and ask for the community that came here today to support the protection of those three items to please stand up. Thank you all for speaking up to protect what is dear to you, even when the plan keeps morphing. They are here again because facts and details matter. They should to you too. What are you, what are you being asked to support today? In November, you were asked to remove the religious use permit. Today, you're being asked to amend the religious use permit. The actual amendment, which doesn't appear anywhere in the 628-page agenda, but exists only on a letter submitted by the attorney, is for less than three acres. The Code of Virginia Beach prohibits religious use permits on less than three acres. Therefore, you're being asked to reduce the religious use out of existence. We are literally right back to square one, November 2023. When asked, the planning department said they do not know why the parcel sizes have changed from the agenda to this new letter. There are over 4,000 square feet unaccounted for from the plan submitted in writing. What will be retained for another church to use was 2.45 acres, and it is now 2.53 acres, one acre of which is a lake. Therefore, it is half the size allowable for religious use according to the city code. We know the developer really wants to add four more homes on the five-home proposal, or to the five-home proposal. He has floated that a number of times in multiple circles. If that is the plan, put it on paper. It shouldn't be this hard to get a clear understanding of what is on the table, especially after years of exploration, since this was originally presented to the city in April of 2020. When something is this convoluted, you know there is something that someone doesn't want you to see. Don't let that happen. Remove the speculation. The letter states that the developer has offered to give the entire lake to the city multiple times. The planning department has not been able to answer the question of who decided that the city doesn't want it. When multiple sources agree, including the developer's attorney, that Lake Conrad II is a valuable stormwater feature and an important ecological asset to the community, who said no? After we taxpayers have invested over $160,000 worth of improvements in this property, why would that gift not be fully explored? Maybe because the developer doesn't own the property yet and doesn't have the right to gift it. Maybe his proposal needs to be put in writing. The church trustees have said repeatedly that they didn't know who to go to in regards to a city purchase of the A-frame building, so they went to the Health and Human Services Department, who had rented it for decades for infant and child therapy. There was certainly a breakdown in communication at this point. Can that be addressed now? Figure it out and come back. What happened to the water quality feature that was promised to Lake Conrad II? State and federal funds were provided to install a hydrodynamic separator to improve the water quality on Lake Conrad, also known as Great Neck Lakes, as required by the state. That feature evaporated when this development was proposed. Get that back on the table, put it back on, put it on paper. In November, three days before the hearing, last-minute changes kept the agenda from being voted on. You sent it back to work out the issue, which was protection of the natural watershed. Here we are five months later, and last-minute changes are being presented again. They don't want you to look at them too closely, or you will see no actual codified protection for the lake. The citizens have spoken loud and clear. They want the natural watershed protected. They want the integrity of neighborhoods protected. They want the rights of a church to sell its property protected. They want other churches to be able to find a home in Virginia Beach. Within all of these genuine interests is a private entity trying to maximize his profit. That is the only piece of this puzzle that does not fit. You are here to represent your districts and the city as a whole, not just that developer. Does this project in its current iteration rise to the standard of what your constituents should expect? Does it protect the process of public scrutiny and input? Does it protect the natural watershed? Does it protect the integrity of neighborhoods? Does it protect the right of religious use? If the answer is no, you should vote to deny it. If the answer is maybe, then you should vote to defer it. Clean it up and bring it back. Thank you again for your time and attention.
The next speaker is Derek Copeland, and he is speaking on behalf of Great Neck Estates.
Good evening.
Good evening. Derek Copeland, elected president for three years of Great Neck Estates, responsible for speaking with my neighborhood of Great Neck Estates in this running area to understand what is it that they want and we want in a community, as a neighborhood, and be able to relay that information. I was put in this position for that reason. I actually had a great opportunity, and I'm actually reminded tonight of the first time, being in this position, I was asked to represent the community and speak in front of City Council, and that was back in, I believe it was November of 2022, when there was a request for $1 million from the developer and to do a water filtration system, and at that time, it was deferred indefinitely. But it was kind of my first interaction with this position and this role, and I kind of learned that it's not the place of a developer or anyone requesting to do something for planning to decide what's, how much I can ask for, or what I should ask for. They're going to ask whatever they can request or get, $1 million. And the same thing is here, request to fill in a lake, request to do office space in a residential neighborhood. It's not their place to decide, where do I stop asking? It's our place as a government staff, as the planning commission, as the city council, and as the citizens to stop and ask the question, is it being asked too much? What is being requested, and does that meet our needs? And I'm in a position that I have been asked by my neighborhood to represent them and be able to express our concerns. And originally, I spoke at Planning Commission stating that we were very much unanimously voted against O1 rezoning office space. We did not see any benefit to the neighborhood community of putting a pass-through traffic of office space zoning through our neighborhood, because it would have to go through our front entrance, our main entrance, in order to get to this development, as well as a five-foot-tall, eight-foot-wide signage put within our community's neighborhood for that. And that is what I represented to my community when I spoke to them, and they told me what they wanted, that I spoke against the development plans for that on the Planning Commission. Now I stand before you, where three days ago, I am informed that there is a new plan, a new decision. It's the third change. First, it was filling in the lake, then it was office space was the alternative, and when that was voted five to five not to recommend at Planning Commission, they felt it was necessary now to change the plan to something that may very well be a reasonable solution if given the chance to go through the proper planning process. Up until now, we have been very outspoken as a community to not fill in the lake that neighbors our neighborhood, to not putting in office space that neighbors our neighborhood. We did share information that we felt a church for religious use might be a potential solution, and it feels that the developer took that idea and ran with it before there was any full, proper planning done. And so, knowing that this change happened last Thursday, I was spent four hours knocking on doors this past Sunday, informing my neighbors and my community, what's going on, what's the change, just to try and get an idea of where many of them stood. And the unanimous feeling I got from my community I represent is, there's a lot of change happening in this very short window, and I don't know where the current plan is or how I'm even supposed to make a decision. And so, that is what, I don't know how I'm supposed to speak to their wants as my position as president of the Great Neck Estates for the neighborhood, because they don't know what's even going on to make a proper decision. And so, I'm not speaking here to say this is a, I truly felt that office space was not a good plan. But I'm not saying that five homes is not a good plan. I'm not saying that the church is not a good plan. I'm saying I don't have enough information to make an informed decision. Can someone tell me, what does parking look like for a church on a Sunday when the current parking lot has 20 spots? Is there going to be a conditional permit that says the church cannot grow beyond a certain size, otherwise they exceed the parking lot? Can anyone answer that for me? Additionally, if they do exceed the parking, where is the overflow? I know that White Cliff has overflow. They overflow into a neighboring parking lot across the street, I believe, from the businesses, and there's an understanding that they use that. What does it look like on this land when the 20 current parking spots doesn't work? Where do you grow to? Where does the parking lot go? If the five homes were there, I could imagine parking being extended to the north of the A-frame and giving more opportunities for additional parking so that we don't see cars parking down the street of this newly-developed road they want to build, and we definitely don't see parking on Milldam Road, which is our main entrance. I'm not, I'm sorry, probably not Milldam Road, on our main entrance going into our residential area. I currently live in the very first road, Selden Street, when you come into the property. And it, I asked the question, will I look outside my door and look down the street to the right and see cars parked down the main entrance because they're walking to church? Can someone tell me that? These are questions I very much look forward to be able to engaging in dialogue. Unfortunately, I will say this, that the last two times the developer approached Unfortunately, I will say this, that the last two times the developer approached our community with information, it was to let us know what was happening, not to ask us, what do you think? What can we work together on? It was, hey, we're filling in the lake, and that was at a public environment. Or, hey, we are building 01 zoning office space. And that was done with the Red Bridge team and our two associations. And when they did that, they clearly heard a vocal cry that this is not right. But I still just don't believe, I've been given enough time to speak to my community to understand how do they feel about this and is this the right plan? I am not here again to say the church, the church has every right to sell their land. The developer has every right to buy this land. I'm just asking to be able to give it the appropriate time that planning commission, the city staff, city council, and those that I represent to share their appropriate opinions on how they feel their city and their neighborhood should look, because it's my family's future, it's my children's future, that this is directly impacting. I do believe there is a solution if we all agree to sit down and discuss it. I don't believe we're there yet, and I hope we have the opportunity to defer this so we can have more open conversations, which I look very much forward to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next, the next speaker is Martha. Martha Thoreau.
Good evening. Good evening. There's an old saying that goes something like this, without trust and respect, you don't have much of anything. This Wycliffe Church matter, or more exactly, the Bouchard-Denfield Development Project, is a good example of this. For the past couple of years, there's been a dance of control. Some say the church is entitled to sell its property. Okay, but the question has been and remains, sell it as what? Trust was broken when the residents of long-established Great Neck Estates learned that their long-cherished neighborhood had sold part of the church grounds to a local spot builder who intended to fill the lake in order to build 12 houses. Indeed, prior to taking title, he submitted plans to the city and obtained permits from the state and federal agencies to do just that. Blindsided, the community that for decades had been invited and welcomed was left with little more than an apology from the church, sorry, we need the money, and an implicit reason from the builder, sorry, I want the money. Where's the respect? Where's the trust? For decades, this house of God, along with the glorious grounds which envelop it, has been a part of Great Neck Estates. It welcomed new members and folks from far and wide to partake in good and godly deeds, and the people of Virginia Beach came to love and respect it for what it contributed to our city. The outreach to people with disabilities initiated by dearly departed Phyllis Jackson and their families was extraordinary. So many people from all parts of the city were blessed by its members and volunteers through its godly mission. For so many of us, the destruction of this land is sacrilegious, and the people of Virginia Beach are standing up to defend what many consider an oasis in a city that is growing far too rapidly and leaving thoughtless destruction in its waste, wake. At least 9,000 people have petitioned to save this property. Multiply that by 100, get a true idea to think of what the rampant overreach of develop by developers here. We want preservation. We want trees. We want lakes. For decades, no taxes were paid by a true church that acted on God's mission. The good that has been done and could be continued as possible, we now look to you to abide in God's guidance as we are being guided to do the right thing. You were recently told by a board member of the church in justifying the sale that we are a business. Well, it is their opinion that God, it is God's business that must remain. Members of city council, the desired and designated religious use of this property has existed for decades, and religious use it shall remain for decades. If the business Wycliffe no longer wants this property, it's likely that there's another church which does. Trust and respect God, deny the CUP removal. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Julia Cherry. Julia Cherry. After Ms. Cherry is Suzy Rice.
Good evening. My name is Julia Cherry. I'm a resident of Great Neck Estates, a registered voter in District Nine. I have two addresses, just so you know. I moved back to Great Neck Estates in 2021 and have really enjoyed the peace and quiet, and that's why I bought back in that neighborhood. I needed peace, and I found it. I also found myself in a position to speak for my neighbors when asked to. I'm asking you today to please keep the conditional use permit on the property. It will not stop Mr. Bouchard from closing on it. He could have closed at any time under the conditions. He just doesn't like the conditions. So I am asking you to please keep the cup or defer this, this, all items on the agenda tonight. It is very important that this issue of a church and five houses to be deeply looked at due to the traffic it will, it will cause. I can see houses built on the property, but I can't see houses and a church. So I just think this needs to go back to planning, and it needs to be thought out. But we do not want the church to suffer. We just want what's best for our neighborhood, and what's best is to keep our, our community safe. I've given everybody the records of all the traffic accidents along North Great Neck Road within a mile of Great Neck Estates, and there have been many accidents. And there have been quite a few in the entrances that we have to enter on Millwood Road from Great Neck Road, where Harbor Lane is across from us. We've had quite a few accidents there just within the last year. And you go down to our other entrance, which is Great Neck Circle and Godfrey Lane, where the reserve is, and it's dangerous for them as well. On Sunday, I took pictures of all the cars parked in the parking lot at Wycliffe Church. I've supplied you with those. There were over 40 cars, which is fine. But the current A-frame on Millwood's side could not handle those 40 cars if there were five houses built on the upperlands. So I'm just saying, send this back to planning, defer it, and please keep the cup. And I do hope that you've read the letters and have looked at all the pictures and examined the information that we've all spent so much time giving to you, because it's important to us, and it's important to keep our, our community safe. And I thank you so much for your time, and I really appreciate your, your time put into this. But we don't like it any more than you do, to have to have this drug on for so long. And it's just time to send it back to planning. That's what I think should happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Suzy Rice. After Ms. Rice is Kim Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's nice to be here with you this evening. It was especially nice to make my drive from my neighborhood in Great Neck Estates out here to the lands of the city council. I remember when I drove that, or almost could drive it, in 1962. And so many beautiful changes have been made since then, from 25,000 people to almost half a million. You've done a good job, we've done a good job, when developing this city with the many things and many issues that we have had to face. I'm simply going to speak tonight a little bit about trees. A minimum of 10 trees, including five cedars that are between 75 and 100 years old, sit on the property discussed herein to be developed. Based on the current developer's plan, they will have to be cut down and thereafter be replaced with semi-imperious or even impervious landscapes. Cedars may need as much as 33 gallons of groundwater each day. These act to absorb stormwater that flows from the more than 30 acres, mostly impervious land around them, as well as to reduce noise and benefit the exceptional wildlife found in Great Neck Estates. Governor Youngin voted, voted the very important HB 170 Incorporated. Let me start again there. Governor Youngin vetoed the very important HB 170 Incorporated into HB 1100 and widely-backed by the General Assembly, giving localities unprecedented authority to save or replace trees. What a shame. Let us work around this by taking a step to stop a proposal that is not only detrimental to our local environment, but additionally adds major traffic woes, increased issues of safety, loss of wildlife habitat, and stormwater woes. I have been a friend and a very close neighbor to Wickliffe Presbyterian Church, as well as a trustee at my own church. I think that the initial decision to get a developer might have been a bit impetuous. But I believe that the current situation has developed out of a lack of initial foresight and investigation that would have invented, would have benefited all concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Johnson. After Ms. Johnson is Phil Hines.
Good evening. I'm Kim Johnson, and we're going to summarize this in three minutes or less. We've all been working very hard to put forth conditions and proposals, but I didn't speak at city council or city planning until toward the end of this entire process, when it became into my consciousness that there's a way to be for the people, with the people, by the people, with creative solutions that have not yet been put forth. If there's a way for the builder to have his money, the church to have their money, and the citizens to be able to have their land that we hold so dear, that we want to make sure that we don't have a problem with water runoff, and we make sure that we take care of having all the natural resources within a city, that we follow a city plan that gives quality of life bar none. We have a very nice community in the, in the United States, and we've been recognized in multiple publications for that purpose. So listen to this and see what you think. Not trying to create a solution in a compact amount of time that allows for just a deadline to be met that can be extended through mutual agreement. But what the city can really do, you have over 9,000 people that have signed on as an, as concerned about this, 900 people who pay taxes, 9,000, excuse me, who pay taxes, and there are more that are concerned. What about public-private partnerships? What about the public coming forth and saying, hey, look, we'd like to make either donations to the church, so they get paid, and maybe that would be extended over time? Perhaps we'd like to use park, city parks and rec. They have, I've been told, a method for having, taking donations or creating some other charitable organization and donating money to the purpose of buying this land, this little piece of land that could be used for religious purpose, but we'd like it to be a park and have something purposeful with this historic building, and maybe even contribute monetarily to that, perhaps getting some benefactors. And maybe the city council going a little bit further and being a model for the rest of this, of America and saying, our community, by the people, for the people, with people, we'll go ahead and give you maybe tax credits, builder, to offset what you're doing in the future, or, or even in the present, to help make this whole mess go away. Give our community the ability to keep their wetlands, their, their water runoff. It's not a pond, and I'd feel better if it wasn't called a pond. But my last point to make real quick, because I see the time going, is that we want to be sure that in the future, this little parcel of land that might be sold to a church, that might be this, that might be that, is never developed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next, the next speaker is Phil Hines. After Mr. Hines is Reverend Dr. Garrett Bug.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Phil Hines, and I'm speaking in support of what appears to be a good compromise. A few weeks ago, I was asked to take a position on this project, but before I felt comfortable taking a position on the subject, I figured I'd do some research to get a well-rounded perspective on the matter at hand. I met with the Great, Great Neck Estates community, talked with the rep at the church, and briefly talked to the developer. It honestly sounds like a middle ground has been struck. I applaud the residents of Great Neck Estates. You've worked tirelessly for a cause you believe in and for your community. You've preserved Lake Conrad and reduced traffic congestion for your neighborhood. I also think it's important to recognize the church, who's been a good neighbor for such a long time. They should absolutely be able to sell their property. That being said, I realize it's been a two-year process, and it looks like a workable deal's been reached. That's a good thing. But the latest iteration does appear to have come together in the last three business days. To discover this information, I, along with the public, had to go through a 600-page document on the bookmarked agenda on the city website. All that being said, I do support a 30-day deferral. Again, the project sounds workable, but respectfully, for purposes of ensuring everyone has had time to digest this updated version that seems reasonable. Not only does it ensure accuracy, it may go a long way in helping instilling some public trust in our local government. You've spent more than two years deliberating, so don't let 30 days of public review get in the way of what sounds like a good plan for everyone. Thank you.
The next speaker is Reverend Dr. Garrett Bug. And then after Dr. Bug will be Gail Swartser.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, esteemed members of council, and a special hello to Councilwoman Ross Hammond. It is good to see you, and we were glad to host you at the Crowns Concert this past Sunday at Wickliffe Presbyterian Church. I am the Reverend Dr. Garrett Bug. I've been pastor at Wickliffe Presbyterian Church since 2013. I live in the Point of Woods neighborhood here in Virginia Beach. And I stand before you tonight to share a little more of the Wickliffe Presbyterian story. My very first Sunday at Wickliffe Presbyterian Church, I called the children up for the children's sermon. One child came forward. Now, we average between 15 and 20 children each Sunday coming forward. And more on holidays and special kids' club nights. Ministry at Wickliffe is growing, and not just with the children, and that growth is a great thing, but it presents us with a challenge. As you well know, facility use, maintenance, staffing, supplies, all of these things require money. All of them require planning. In fact, over the past 10 years, our yearly congregational budget has moved from 272,000 to 517,000. And in the last two years, we finally hit the mark where we just slightly exceeded what our congregation could provide. In stewardship times, we like to say, what we love, we plan for. That's a repeatable stewardship phrase. In 2018, recognizing our staffing needs and out of love for the congregation, our church board voted to plan for the future. We recognized we had to look beyond the yearly pledge campaign and plan for growth, not just survival. The result was the 2021 congregational decision to sell the excess church property. A few years ago, I received a letter out of the blue from an adult who was, as a child, attended Wickliffe over 50 years ago. And she noted that despite her abusive authoritarian home life, she managed to make it to church. She said, "I have the best memories of this church and the gentle kindness of the congregation. The doctrine and message have held my attention for the past 50 years." Wickliffe has tried to maintain that character, and we haven't always gotten it right. We're not perfect. No one here is, yet God uses us anyway. We know that all of you love the city, all of you, everyone in this room. And we know that you, council, devote much of your time to planning for the city's future. Wickliffe Presbyterian Church wants to be an integral part of the city's future. Wickliffe Presbyterian Church wants to be an integral part of the city's future. We ask you to not defer tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gail Swartser, and then after that, it'll be Kathy Mastin.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gail Forser, and I've been a member of Wickliffe Presbyterian for 20 years. I've been clerk session for 10, and I'm here just to share my views with regard to this land sale. So, why does Wickliffe want to sell 3.5 acres? The main reason is growth, growth of Wickliffe Ministries, its mission, and its membership. But a growth began with a loss. Let me explain. 2012, Wickliffe was suffering. With no minister and no pastoral leadership, whether it would survive was in question. Now, with 2013, we hired Pastor Bug. Within a year, Pastor Bug transformed Wickliffe, and it began to grow. With energy, imagination, and action, the new minister produced an energy throughout the church that created growth, excitement, and creativity. Growth began in earnest, and over that last 10 years, I've seen, and the church statistics show, that Wickliffe membership, one, grew. Even with an unusual number of deaths annually, membership total began to increase, and we kept ahead of membership, I mean, kept ahead of our loss. Now, our growth is one of the best in our Presbyterian. Two, ministries and mission group, first slowly but increasing in speed and in breadth and in diversity. They reach both Wickliffe and our community with their diversity. In 10 years of our growth, mission, ministry, and membership is phenomenal. As a result, we needed to hire an associate pastor to help with this growth. We hired Lindsay Gilliam. Briefly, ministry can't grow without money. With the growth in the three Ms. to date, that is ministry, mission, and membership, Wickliffe needs the capital from the land sale, and I hope Wickliffe has your vote. We invite all of you, members, council members, everyone here, come, come and see, visit Wickliffe. We look forward to your energy, to your ideals as they grow, and hopefully, your fellowship in the future. Thank you for your time and for your service. I know it's not easy to be up there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Kathy Mastin, and then it'll be Rick Boils.
Good evening.
Good evening to you. You all must be tired. I'm happy to be here tonight. My name is Kathy Mastin. I'm honored to serve as an elder in my church, as well as a trustee, and I'm here this evening to ask that you enable us to sell our property by approving the zoning request before you. 60 years ago, leaders of our then-young church made an investment in our then-young city. These leaders had the foresight to facilitate the purchase of eight acres of land on what has become one of Virginia Beach's busiest roads. They purchased this land as an investment that would help secure the future of our church. Their actions were bold, and they were wise, and there are many in our congregation who feel deeply grateful for the wisdom and the diligence of these former church leaders. The vision for our church is that we will be a beacon of light in our community. We have worked hard to let our light shine. Over the years, while our church has grown, we have also suffered the loss of many of our early church leaders. To say the least, we grieve their loss. In 2018, as we came to terms with the financial impact of a shrinking congregation, it became clear that to be fiscally responsible and in order to continue to grow, we needed to carefully evaluate both our assets and our liabilities. That evaluation pointed directly to our excess land. Our church building and parking lot utilized only half of the eight acres that were purchased so many years ago. We had to recognize that the remainder of the property, while beautiful to look at, was actually a drain on our finances. Upkeep on that excess four acres was costing us money, and while we were determined to be good stewards of the property, we had to recognize that, given its market value, the excess property was a much underutilized asset. After careful and prayerful consideration, the decision was made to put that property on the market, resulting in a contract with the Bechard Homes, signed in 2021. As previously stated, our goal is to sell our property. Your approval will enable us to do so, and it will give us the resources necessary to continue to do the work that God has called us to do. On behalf of the Wickliffe congregation, I thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you very much.
And I thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you.
Rick Boils, and then it'll be Gloria Copeland.
Good evening, Rick. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Manager Duhany, Attorney Stiles, and our esteemed clerks here. For the record, my name is Rick Boils. I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations, president of the Thalia Civic League, a business owner in the city of Virginia Beach for the last 20 years, and a lifelong city resident. I come to you tonight not to oppose nor support this application. Looking at this from a neighborhood perspective, I come to ask you to consider whether the letters and information received from the applicant on Thursday and Friday of last week have given those folks sufficient time to digest that new information, to distribute it to their constituents, and whether it has been sufficient amount of time to be evaluated by those that oppose this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Copeland, and then we have one WebEx speaker after that.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Gloria Copeland. I own property in Great Neck Estates, but I live in District 6. And I'm here this evening for one reason. I'm asking you to defer a decision tonight. I have been attending the meetings to try to understand what appeared to be a very complicated issue, that every time I almost thought I understood what was going on, it would change. And so, the last time I attended the planning meeting, that disapproved, denied the request, I thought, okay, so then we'll see what's going to happen. And what happened, instead of me having an opportunity to assess what's new, is I get told we're going to vote on this tonight. Makes no sense. I deserve a right to hear what it is people want to do. That's all I'm asking for, is to hear. I don't know if I'm going to agree or disagree with it. I know I don't know enough to even have a position. But I have been, and I retired from the military. I came to Virginia Beach because I had family here. I moved to Great Neck Estates because it's where I thought I would give my family the best opportunity to blend into this new city that we moved to. I spent almost 30 years in the military. So, I come here, and now I'm a part of the community. That means I get to hear what you have to say before you make a decision, and that's what I'm asking you to do, defer your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one WebEx speaker, Rhona Marsh. You are unmuted and may begin. Mr. Burdon for rebuttal.
Eddie, bring some clarity.
I'm sorry?
Bring some clarity.
I'll certainly attempt to bring some clarity. First of all, the earlier application that Ms. Marsh was referring to was an application by Wickliffe Presbyterian Church to, which the city attorney's office says they have to do, have their use permit modified so it doesn't apply to this excess property on the north side. That excess property has not been used since 1989 for any religious use at all, and the parcel that is a part of, that the only part that we're seeking to rezonate today has never had any church use on it whatsoever, the 1.53 acres, none. The remainder of the property hasn't had a church use on it, again, since the Infant STEM program was in the A-frame building. But that original application was nothing more than to remove the use permit. The church never had any plan to fill. It was a church's application. I represented church. There was no application to fill anything. The opposition, some of the opposition, became aware that the city department is of the opinion that this pond, lake, stormwater BMP, that 75% of the water going through it that's on the church's property is public stormwater, that it doesn't serve any useful purpose. And that's why the city hasn't agreed, as we have offered, as we filed this new zoning application, after the first one had so much opposition, and all these petitions went out, that somebody is trying to fill the pond, and the churches never, never just wanted to fill the pond. And that's, they keep going on the shoulders of those petitions. This is not an application to fill anything. The part of property we're talking about rezoning, the residential part, is the exact same zoning that the property's had, but now we get to see exactly what it's going to be, and that it doesn't touch the pond. It doesn't do a thing to the pond. The city has a drainage movement through the pond. There's no purpose served by trying to get permits to fill the pond. The church never wanted to do that. There was some activity early on with the Bechards about possibly doing it because it serves no purpose from a drainage standpoint, according to your city public works director. But we are way past that, and the opposition is just continuing to talk about something that's not happening, not in any way, shape, or form. This application doesn't touch the lake, has nothing to do with the lake, and we're not changing the fact that the rest of the property, the church, it's a total of over six acres, will continue to be subject to the use permit that exists from 1966. Only part of the property that's this excess property that was ever used for church purpose, which it was up until the mid-1980s, that remainder of the property, 2.53 acres, 1.897 acres of that property is highland. A little over half an acre, 0.53 acres, is in the pond, lake, impoundment, whatever anybody would like to characterize it. Excuse me. Before anything can happen on the piece that we're asking you to rezonate tonight, the back piece has to be the subject and will be the subject if all goes according to what we absolutely believe is going to happen. The church that's interested will put a contract in. They'll bring forward a conditional use permit application. We'll go through that four-month process. The neighborhood will be consulted, met with. They'll get to see their plans. It's not BHC's plan, and they'll get to decide, you know, do you like it or do you don't? But it's going to come forward to this body. And so, the information that people say they need about what's going to happen with the back piece, you're going to have that opportunity. And the application that we have maintained in place and agreed to maintain in place, that the use permit that Wickliffe has will remain on the back portion of the property means nothing can happen there without going back through this process. So, we're not, this is no game. No one's going to fill anything, and the city does have control, and they have the opportunity, have been given the opportunity to buy the property, by both Wickliffe initially and by the Bechards later. Okay? So, we've done everything. With this application, we withdrew, was based on an attempt to maintain the lake, the pond, bridge, and that space, but there was opposition, and we're not going to relitigate that. It's fine if you don't want the office zoning as tightly proffered as it was for a use very similar to the Infant STEM program that had been on there for all these years. That's fine. We're not trying to jam something down. But the reality is, it's zoned R10, just like the surrounding properties zoned R10. The lake isn't, or the pond isn't going to be touched under any circumstance, and if this church application is acceptable to council for its use permit, because that's the only way it can happen, and until that does happen, or until a conditional rezoning to conditional R10 from straight R10 is placed on the back part of the property, this piece on the front cannot be subdivided and utilized in any way. So, it's going to remain as it is until something is approved on the back part of the property. So, the front piece, again, no religious use has ever been on it. It will remain as is until, hopefully, and I think, and I've heard a lot of positives tonight, that the use permit for the church, which you'll get to see what they want to do, and I'm certain that they're going to want to make it a little bit larger, and I actually think some of the folks who spoke tonight are well aware of it, because they, I think, talked to the pastor and some other folks with the church, and I've talked with one of the trustees of the church. So, we absolutely believe that's going to come forward, but it'll be quite a number of months, and the Bechards, the church needs to sell the property, and the Bechards need to buy it and get this process moving. But again, nothing can happen on the piece that we're asking you to rezonate, just from R10 to conditional, so you know what's going to go on it, without the back piece being use permit for a church or conditional rezoning to R10, and the removal of the Wickliffe use permit from the back part of the property.
Any questions? Rosemary.
A couple of questions, Eddie.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what is this Millwood Family Care Center?
I'm sorry, I really can't hear.
The Millwood Family Care Center, what is that?
I have no idea. Oh, that, I know. I think the sign rendering with the conditional rezoning application may have had that on it, but I have no idea. had that on it, but there's, I have no idea. There was nothing in, in our application.
It was just an idea, it wasn't actually something, right?
No, there's, there's, there is no proposed use for, there was no proposed use for the piece of property, no, no buyer, no tenant, no anything. But that was, I think that might have been just a name that they made up and put on the, the sign rendering for that 01 conditional rezoning that we're asking to withdraw. But no, I have no, I have no earthly idea what that is.
The other question, the civic league president was asking about the A-frame, if it was going to be a church, about the adequateness of parking.
Well, the, the church, what, what I believe will be the circumstance is that the church will enter into a contract to buy the property and they will come forward with a use permit for how they would like to develop the property. And I suspect that they will, if they are approved, and it will, I'm told it will involve a somewhat larger building than is there now and will involve some additional parking. And again, it'll be on almost two acres of land, and I can go through a list of 15 churches in the northeastern part of the city that are on less land than this. The, but that will be an application that everyone will be able to participate in. But in the, in the interim, before they develop that, assuming that the use permit's approved and they buy the property, they'll use the existing A-frame, I suspect.
But that's not, that's not being decided tonight.
That's not being decided tonight.
If it comes forward, it's something in the future to be determined in the future. So that's off the table.
That's, that's, nothing's happening tonight on that back piece of property. That's what we think will come forward in the future and, and nothing will happen on the front piece until that or some other rezoning to residential comes forward.
So it's my understanding that when I went before the planning commission, that most people were very upset about the 01 and that, you know, they didn't want a three-story office building and their neighborhood and the traffic and all of that stuff. So the reason that you're asking for the withdrawal of that was because that was the big opposition and they, they called it spot zoning, even though our city attorney said it's not spot zoning, but, but the neighborhood objected to it and said that's why that's on the table to be withdrawn tonight.
100%. Being sensitive to what we heard from the neighborhood, the church is a part of the neighborhood and the developers are very sensitive to the neighborhood and when it became obvious, and when this other opportunity came forward, which we did not know of then, the church opportunity sounds like, and, and I, more than sounds like, I believe it will absolutely be a win-win, but the church isn't going there under the current use permit. They'll have to get their own because they're going to propose some changes, I don't know it, but I do, I do know that they are not going to affect the lake and I do, I've been told that they have every intention of maintaining the Red Bridge. But that will be something that everyone will participate in. Nothing's going to happen without this council approving their use permit.
So, and I talked to you last week because I was still concerned that the lake, the pond, whatever we want to call it, could still be filled in with this new rezoning. And you told me then that an impoundment easement would be put there so that that couldn't happen in the future.
We have, we agreed, the, the shards agreed when I filed the applications, that the 01 application conditional that we're withdrawing tonight, we expected to be required to, to put an impoundment easement on it. We agreed to put an impoundment easement on it. And the public works department has made it very clear, and I really shouldn't be speaking for all these wonderful city leaders, they, they don't want it, period. Not because, I don't think, they're, they're not suggesting it should be filled, but they say it doesn't, it doesn't provide any benefit to the city. And that Lake Conrad handles all the stormwater and can handle a whole lot more.
That was the big brouhaha in November is we did not want that lake filled, you know, no fill wetlands and all of that. So that's one of the reasons we kicked it back to the planning commission because there was a lot of misunderstanding. So this will assure everyone that that lake will not be filled in. Is that correct?
That's 100% correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's absolutely nothing we are doing tonight, again, what we're asking you to do tonight, there's nothing that we're asking you to do tonight that will in any way, shape or form imperil that pond, lake BMP, nothing. Because you've still got an easement through it that would have to be widened to 40 feet or more and, and a whole new easement done, which the city would have to agree to. And again, I'm just talking hypothetically, not anybody's going to do it, but in order for it to be filled and permits would have to be obtained from other governmental agencies. And there would have to be some reason to do it. It would cost a ton of money. And we have no use, the Bichards will have no use approved at this point for their back two and a half acres. They'll have to get approval from this body either because they can't subdivide the front part, either by R-10 to conditional R-10 rezoning or a church use permit, which is all, those are the only two options on the table. And one of those, the church, we are pretty certain is going to be coming forward in, you know, probably four or five months.
Anybody else? Yeah, okay. We go Amelia and then Chris.
Yeah, I do have one question about the planning commission. What was the vote for the planning commission? I believe, I just want to verify.
It's five to five.
I thought it was five to five. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Mr. Burdon, Mr. Bichard, and to the church and all the citizens that have been engaged for two and a half years. I haven't been here that long, but August 2023, November 2023, and here we are. Everyone's voice throughout this process that wanted to be heard, I believe, has been heard. I think it's been a excellent example of community engagement. For the most part, everyone has been civil. I received a few emails and letters that weren't too kind and, of course, you're in a tough position, but we get threatened with the opening line, "I'm a voter," which is good. So I first want to thank everyone for being engaged in discussion and for being polite and civil because I don't see this as a divisive issue. I don't think the church is against the community. I don't see the church, the community being against the church. And I represent 44,000 people in this district. So I'm trying to be cautious with my words because I, I stayed at my position back in November. My colleagues with the leadership of Mayor Dyer chose to send it back to the planning commission. I encouraged that night to just make a vote, up or down. I've seen compromise, I've seen community input. I've heard that some people didn't have a seat at the table. I would argue that everyone that's wanted a seat at this table has had a seat at the I have not lobbied any of my colleagues up here behind closed doors in private meetings to support this or to not support it. I think, as Rosemary said, Vice Mayor, she spoke with you last week, and many others have had an open door to speak with the developer, to speak with the pastor, to speak with Team Red Bridge. And so this is not really political, it's just an issue of, does the District Eight community, the, the residents of Great Neck, the corridor, do they have clarity on the issue? And clearly, the answer to that tonight is no. Is there an understanding of the value of adding five 3,000 square foot homes to the edge of Great Neck Road? Some here tonight on Team Red Bridge are supportive of that, and I've received many emails that are not very supportive of, of that development opportunity. Pastor Bug, I commend you and the church for all the work you've done, opening up your doors, allowing citizens to come in. I'm thankful that you prayed before the meeting so it could stay calm. But you said something that really stuck with me tonight. You asked or you requested that we not defer it. And you requested that we make a decision. And we are elected to make decisions. I keep hearing, send it back to the planning commission. The planning commission is not the duly elected body in the city of Virginia Beach, it's the city council. And last time, they had a five to five, so they couldn't get a decision. And so tonight, I'm going to make a motion to deny the request that is before us. It's not personal, it's just, I don't see a great desire in the community to develop the out parcel, to disturb that landscape. And so with that, I commend everyone for the efforts they've put forth for the church. You are a body of faith, and so I know you, whether I have support here tonight or not, you're going to continue to do what you have to do to serve the kingdom of God. But as for me, as the District Eight representative tonight, I am making a motion to deny the request. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara and then Amelia. Wait a minute, do we need a second first?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Barbara.
Well, are we, you've got a motion on the floor. I was going to ask Mr. Burdon a question and I was going to ask Mr. Stiles a question, but maybe the motion.
It's still a discussion.
Yeah, it's still part of discussion.
Well, in trying to determine, because we don't have before us the usual maps or information for an application we're hearing, because it's changed since this document was... I'm trying to find the maps of, of what you're doing here or what you're asking. I guess it's page 14, I guess, of what was the planning commission agenda. It's not clear, clearly labeled here, but I guess this portion that shows the five house lots, you're asking to rezonate to R-10?
Yes, ma'am. The, and I, I hope you've got, it shows a red line on it.
I don't have a red line, I don't know.
Doesn't have a red line on it? Can I pass you mine?
No, it's too late.
All right. Well, the, the answer to your question, Mrs. Henley, is that's the, the only portion of the property that we are asking for, the conditional R-10 rezoning from unconditional R-10 with this proffered plan along the Great Neck Road and Millwood. That is, that's what we're requesting, and you'll note that Lot 5, if you can read the small print, which is the house that backs up to the Wickliffe Church and has its utilities coming in off of Great Neck Road. But those, that is the extent of what is requested to be rezoned. It's exactly what was before the planning commission and exactly what staff has recommended approval of. And as was asked, the planning commission, 95% of the comments were, they did not want the balance of the property conditionally rezoned to 01. And I think you've heard that from a number of the speakers, even on the opposing side, that that was the issue.
Okay, I didn't mean for you to go all in, I just was trying to clarify.
But that's it.
What you're asking. So that you're asking to be rezoned, but that leaves the parcel that's 2.538 acres, which now is going to be potentially sold to another church. And I'm trying to figure out how much of that parcel is actually usable if it's going to be a church. And I, I just don't, I can't see that.
One point, it's one, it's, it's almost 1.9 acres, 1.89 acres.
At this time, we require three acres for a church. That would have to be a variance, Rodney.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So it would have to have a variance in order to do that. So anyway, I think we're getting pretty far ahead.
Well, let me, let me say something.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked you a question. I only asked you which map. I don't want to hear the whole rezoning again.
There's only, I'm not, but there's only one.
My next question is for Mr. Stiles. Thank you very much. Mr. Stiles, is, wouldn't this be considered a substantial change to the application? I mean, can we have before us a substantial change to the application? Or if there is a substantial change, wouldn't it have to go back to the planning commission?
Mrs. Henley, in my judgment, it, it, it is not a substantial change. It's the exact same rezoning, it's just they're not accomplishing it all at one time. And I think those two can be legally severed, but as Mr. Burdon has told you, he can't record the subdivision plot for the area being rezoned until they come back to you and do the second half. And if the second half is now going to be a church rather than 02, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, than office, then that does have to go back to the planning commission. But what you're being asked to approve tonight is the same conditional R-10 zoning that was before the planning commission. So I don't believe that is materially different.
Okay, thank you. I disagree.
Okay. Amelia?
Yes, I've listened to the church, to the community, to the planning commission. That's why you heard me ask that question, to find out whether it was like a six to, two or what. And it was just an even split of five to five. I've also heard from our staff who had approved it. So I would like to put a substitute motion. Is that all right, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we accept the applicant's request to withdraw items two and four as identified in our documents and further move that we approve the applicant's request to amend item one, the modification of conditions to a conditional change of zoning from R-10 residential to conditional R-10 and a variance to section four, four in parentheses B of the subdivision regulations for parcel Lot 5. As you see, you're mentioning, we're just doing that motion. And then it is important to me and to all of us to make sure that there is an impoundment easement on the lake so that it will never be filled in. It will still have the lakes, the birds, the trees, if it to walk around, but that first part, I'm asking for a substitute motion to move for approval of what you have.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we had a second thing, so I guess we will vote on the substitute motion. Okay, Eddie, we're good.
I wasn't sure I understood the part about the impoundment easement.
And we also, you wanted a, that the church's use permit would be modified as to the, just the conditional R-10 and stays in place on the rest of the, the church's property. And, and we, the impoundment easement, we'll be happy to provide it, but we, if you, the city won't accept it, I don't know what I can do about that.
Mayor Dyer, I think, I think the council member that's requested, I should clarify for the city attorney what she's asking.
Okay.
Well, what I mentioned maybe is how I said it, but I know the lake is important to the entire community. And this is why I'm saying that, just saying it out loud, that it will never be filled in, because I listened when Councilwoman Wilson asked you about impoundment. So that's why, you see, I wrote that down to say that it will never be filled in, just looking at that beginning part. If you don't want me to say that part, I'll leave it, but in my mind, that lake is important.
Mark?
I, I have a proposal which would suggest that, and, and we acknowledge that there is currently a drainage easement down the center of that lake. In order for the lake to be drained, that drainage easement would have to be modified or eliminated. So I would suggest that you might accomplish the same purpose by including in your motion a direction to staff that they not allow an alteration or relocation of the existing drainage easement without further direction by this council. I think that might accomplish the same purpose.
All right, what he said.
Yeah. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
And then, and then...
That's a friendly amendment, right?
Yes.
That's a friendly amendment, and, and I accept it.
That's a friendly amendment, and, and I accept it.
Okay. The other issue that Mr. Burdon mentioned was, remember, the very first application was to modify the use permit to remove all 3.8 acres of the property from the use permit. What I have asked Mr. Burdon to agree to, and what I would ask the council member to consider would be to amend that and grant it only as to the portion that is being rezoned and thereby leave the rest of the use permit on the remainder of the property.
Okay. We thank you for your advice because this is important.
Okay, I think that, you know, if it's okay at this point, Mr. Stiles, when we go forward, we have a substitute motion to approve. And that would make, and if that is approved by council, that would be the primary motion, correct?
That is the correct procedure, sir.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, at this point, there is a substitute motion to approve.
The vote is open. It says one. That's okay. What's the vote? By a vote of seven to four, the substitute motion now becomes the main motion.
Okay, now, we vote on this motion right now. Okay, now, this motion will be to, the, the primary motion to approve. Yes.
Would you, would you mind if I just addressed the, and just made a couple of comments just so that the public could have the benefit of where I'm coming from?
Go right ahead.
I appreciate it.
Okay, please, please, you're out of order. Please, let's be respectful.
Excuse me.
Ms. Thoreau, I'm going to ask you to be civil. Thank you.
Anyway, I represent District Nine on the council, obviously, and, and I'm somebody who certainly values environmental protection. And when we first, when I first saw this application early on, and it involved filling in the pond, it gave me concern. It really did. And whether or not the applicant could or couldn't do it, it was just optically horrible. And when we had to evaluate that application back many months ago, the reason we sent it back to planning was so that the developer, the church, and the community could work together to try and find a reasonable, reasonable compromise. What I heard from the community was, don't fill in the pond, protect our natural area. They value the connection between both sides of their neighborhood. They used the property and the church allowed for generations as a, as a place to gather and a place to recreate. Thank you for allowing me to tour the property and learn more about it. And I think that the scenario that we're, we've arrived at today has been a result of your input, not in spite of it. And I don't know that, I mean, I've been on the council for a year and three months now, but I don't know that it's irregular for a plan to be reworked after community input. I think that's the process working. People certainly may feel differently about it, and I totally understand that. But there are mechanisms in place to save the pond, protect the natural space. The office use is off the table, which was something we heard that the community objected to. And there will be additional steps before the parcel that we're not dealing with tonight gets dealt with. And it'll come back before planning. It'll come back before the council, and it will have the benefit of community input. So I, I want to, I want to let the community to know that, that I've, I've heard you. I've heard you. And that you ought to be congratulated because you, you essentially affected an outcome that was, that is much, much better than what would have otherwise been. So I will support the motion, but I wanted to make sure to make my comments clear to you.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready to vote?
The vote is open.
Vote is open. Vote is for approval.
Go ahead and close it. No, go ahead and close it. By a vote of seven to four, you have approved the application as amended.
Okay, thank you all very much. Most appreciated. Moving on to the last item of number seven, ordinance to amend section 111 of the city ordinance, CZO regarding definition of dwelling unit, home sharing, kitchen, and porch.
We have two speakers. The first speaker is Gail Johnson. And after Ms. Johnson is Paul Kane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak on behalf of hundreds of owners of rental, short-term rental units that have been designated by the city since 2018 as home shares. But this year, we were harassed by, with summons out of the blue, saying we were operating illegally. This, in my case, for instance, Will, Will, Will Miller, who was formerly the chair of the, or in charge of implementing the STR regulations, in 2021, after the new regulations were adopted, he told me that my property was still a home share. Yet I received a summons out of the blue, saying, summons to criminal court, saying that I was operating illegally. It took seven months to resolve this. This is very typical of the waste that has occurred throughout 2023, the waste of staff time, court time, and taxpayer money. And it does need to be addressed. So I applaud the first change in the definition of home, home sharing to, say, dwelling unit. That's a good first start, but we need more. So backtrack to January of 2021, the planning commission said, oh, we don't need to do anything with this definition of, of home sharing, which had been created in 2018. We don't need to do anything because it already addresses the important element, which is that the owner lives on the property. When the owner lives on the property, there are no problems with noise and parking and trash and unsavory renters. It's no problem. So what we suggest, those of us who have home shares and have been dragged in court, we suggest that this definition needs more work. The VBSTR alliance had no idea what was going on, had no idea that this was being proposed. We would like more time for us to address this with you, with the planning commission. It could be changed very simply with just two, changing two words. The current definition has the word dwelling three times. So zoning wants to say the first is dwelling unit, and that, that seems very reasonable. But the other two, if we change those two to property, then this is what you get. A dwelling unit in which a room or rooms are offered for rental for compensation for a period of less than 30 consecutive days by an owner who utilizes the property as his principal residence and occupies the property during any such rental period. That would go with what the planning commission said we needed in 2021.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, thank.
The last speaker is Paul Kane.
Hi, I'm Paul Kane.
Good evening.
Hear me out. She pretty much addressed it all. I was taken to court for an STR, but I'm not, I'm a home share. So when I got to court, they, they changed it, okay? And went on this word dwelling. From that day in court, they seem to have lost or the judge dismissed an awful lot of those cases. So I think now they're just trying to change the wording. So that's all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on this one.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, vote is open.
One sec. The vote is open. By a vote of nine to two, you have approved the application.
Okay, appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Advertising Advisory Committee, we'd like to appoint Michael Mott, John Zirkle, Justin Beal, Kate Pittman, Harshad Barat, Tyler Brown, Betsy Atkinson, Jeanne Evans-Cox, Amy Frostnik, Charles Thornton, Meredith Gray, and Delcino Miles. Councilmember Remick, Council Lady Dr. Ross Hammond, Nancy Hellman, and Teridale Wiley. For the Arts and Humanities Commission, we'd like to appoint Tricia Phillips. The Audit Committee to reappoint Emileson Esperutu. The Community Service Board, I'd like to appoint Sharif Hines. The Minority Business Council to reappoint Jakita Clark-Thompson, Tara Jones. The Personnel Board, James Barber. Short-term Rental Enforcement Task Force to appoint Paige Miares and Mark Stevens. And the Virginia Beach Towing Advisory Board to reappoint Bradley Volner. Move for approval.
Vote is open.
Councilmember Remick and Councilmember Taylor may have your vote. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to zero, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, is there any old business, any new business? Hey, thank you all for a productive day. We are adjourned.